2021 council meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
You're muted, Dr. Lee.
I'm here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Yeah.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present and can continue. I am chairing the meeting tonight as Mayor Protem. Mayor Palm Copeland could not be with us tonight. I'm going to ask you now to bow your heads for a word of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, please bless this assembly and all that are here today. Thank you for allowing us to meet during this time of crisis. Please bless us today and help us to have a great outlook on our present circumstances. We know that you are good and wise and know that even now you are blessing us as we go through our present circumstances. Grant that we would be wise and respond to the choices that we face. Please be in this meeting tonight. Let us be leaders who honor your holy name, for it is only from you that we get our true wisdom. It is in the mighty name of Jesus that we believe this and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have a few presentations tonight, so we're going to begin by recognizing one of our excellent students from Georgia Military Prep School. I would like to invite Deasia and her family to come and join me up front. Deasia Stevens has worked hard on her athletic skills and has excelled in her academics and is the first female African American from Georgia Military Prep School to be accepted and signed with the Citadel Military College in South Carolina. I'm going to ask the clerk to please read this award.
Mayor's Award of Excellence awarded to Deasia Stevens to highlight her high academic achievements as a 2021 Honors graduate from Georgia Military College, to acknowledge her athletic abilities on the court, field, and track, and in recognition of being the first female African American student from Georgia Military College to be academically accepted and signed with the Citadel, the Military College of South Carolina.
So, Deasia, on behalf of the mayor and council of the city of Millisville, we want you to know how proud we are of you. We know this is one of many awards that you will receive, and we congratulate you for your accomplishments. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Deasia. Okay. The next presentation is also really nice since there are checks from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. I would like to invite Wayne Johnson, the Director of the Bowman County Emergency Management Agency, to the front. Mr. Johnson has worked closely with us at the city in Wajima to apply for a grant to help reimburse for some of the costs the city incurred in cleaning up after the mayhem caused in the wake of Hurricane Irma. Mr. Johnson, as we accept these checks, I would like to thank you on behalf of the Mayor Alderman and the staff of the city of Millisville for your assistance in providing this reimbursement to us.
Yay, yay, yay.
All you need to do is sign these over there.
Ms. Shinholster, if I could just add to that, when we say that Mr. Johnson worked with us to get this done, that he did yeoman's work to get this done between him and Ms. Kim Rhodes Wajima. Y'all know how long ago Irma was, and this was just kind of out, hanging out there loose after you all allowed me to be city manager, and I found out about it and got with Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Johnson got Ms. Rhodes involved, and she actually even called me Friday afternoon and said, "If you'll send me this, 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 we've got even more money for y'all for this." So, they have been extremely helpful getting this project closed out, and I appreciate Wayne's help locally and Ms. Rhodes' help with Wajima, so.
Thank you, Wayne. Our third and final presentation this evening is from David Irwin, representing our auditing firm, Malden &amp; Jenkins. Mr. Irwin is here to give our comprehensive annual financial audit report. Mr. Irwin joins us via Zoom tonight. Mr. Irwin, I will give the floor to you for your report.
Well, thank you. I have a presentation here. I'm going to try to share my screen. Can you all see this?
We can.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you all are doing well. My name is David Irwin, and I'm with Malden &amp; Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the city's financial statements, and certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here to discuss the results of this year's audit. You know, I hate that I was not able to be there in person, but, you know, God willing, hopefully, things will soon return to normal so I can be there in person for next year's presentation. Okay. I believe you all have already received a copy of the financial statements, so the purpose of tonight's presentation is just to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors' report. Hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the compliance audit that we issue in accordance with the financial audit, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all and to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves, they are the responsibility of city's management and members of the city council. As your independent auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. This is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide you as your external auditor. What this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Before I get to financial statements, I want to take a moment and just thank your staff for all their hard work this year. You know, as you can imagine, this year's audit came with its own unique set of challenges. There was quite a bit of uncertainty on our end as to how the pandemic would affect the audit process. And, you know, I'm happy to be able to tell you all that, from an audit standpoint, this year was business as usual. You know, Shay and her staff, they did a great job under some very unique and unusual circumstances. As always, they were very accommodating to our audit team. They worked hard to answer any questions that we had and give us all the information that we needed in order to finalize the audit within the deadline or by the deadline. So, again, just a special thank you to them. Their hard work is always appreciated, but it was even more so appreciated this year, given circumstances. Now, for a brief overview of the financial statements, again, you all prepare what is called a comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as a CAFR. And a CAFR requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Governmental Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as the GFOA. Well, they put it through a pretty stringent review process. They have a professional staff, as well as a special review committee, that looks at your document. And when they look at the city's financial statements, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the city, but to make sure that the readers of your financial statements have the information available within your document to be able to do so themselves. And through this review, the GFOA has once again awarded the city the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I believe this is the 34th year in a row that the city has received this certificate. So, congratulations to you all on that. I tell you, there's not many entities that I audit that I can sit there and say that they've received the certificate for 30-plus years. So, again, you know, this is a very impressive document and one that you all should be proud of. And if you go through the city's financial statements, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. This is in the front of the document. It begins on page five. It's right after our audit opinion. And, you know, it's only 10 or so pages long, and if you get a chance, I would strongly encourage you to read the MDNA. Again, this is written by management. It does a really good job of summarizing and introducing and summarizing the basic financial statements, as well as providing an analytical overview of the financial activities that occur throughout the year. In addition, you know, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section that discloses financial activity for both fiscal years '20 and '19. So, you know, to me, that adds a lot of value to the reader. It gives the reader a much better understanding of the current year activity when you have the prior year activity to compare it to. So, again, for all those, and I can certainly understand that doesn't necessarily want to read this 150-page document cover to cover, I would strongly encourage you to read the MDNA. Now, the city's basic financial statements, they are broken up into three components, the first of which are your government-wide statements. Now, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the city's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. All the funds of the city are combined under either a governmental activities or business-type activities column. And there are also columns for each of the three, each of the three of the city's component units. This slide gives you a brief highlights of the government-wide statements. You know, as you can see, the city ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources around $72 million. Approximately $46 million of that are your capital assets and net of accumulated appreciation. You all had around $13.6 million in liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, which resulted in an ending net position of approximately $58.4 million this year. And that's a slight decrease compared to last year, around $86,000 decrease. Your revenues were around $24.3 million, and your expenses were slightly higher, coming in right at $24.4 million. So, you know, again, when I talk about net position, you know, one thing to keep in mind, that's not what you all have in the form of cash to spend as you see fit. Net position is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. So, you know, when you look at this, you know, all in all, relatively flat year for the city from an entity-wide perspective. That being said, this is really the only time you'll see the city's financial activities reported in this manner. In the day-to-day operations of the city, the focus is more so on individual funds themselves. Which brings me to the second component of your financial statements, which are your fund-level statements. And again, this is what you typically see throughout the year. This component focuses on the individual parts of the government, and it reports the city's operations in more detail than that of the government-wide statements. I mean, you know, when you talk about all the different funds of the city, a primary interest to you all is the general fund. You know, again, it's the main operating fund of the city, and therefore, it accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. So, we have a couple charts in the next few slides that break down the general fund's revenues and expenditures for the year. As you can see on this slide, total revenues for the general fund were around $12.4 million this year. That's around $628,000 increase from prior year, or around 5% increase. You know, obviously, the majority of the general fund's revenues are derived from taxes. That totaled around $10.5 million this year, and that represents about 85% of the total revenues of the general fund. Property taxes were just under $4 million for the year. You all had sales taxes around $2.8 million, and you had other taxes of around $3.8. And other taxes, that includes your franchise taxes, your insurance premium taxes, et cetera. You know, a couple other significant revenue sources worth mentioning. You all had fines and forfeitures of around $347,000 this year, and you had intergovernmental revenue and licenses of permits, which each totaled approximately $255,000 this year. This chart presents the general fund's expenditures for the year by function. Your expenditures were around $13 million this year. That's a decrease of around $176,000 or a little over 1%. So, you know, again, your revenues increased by about 5%, and your expenditures decreased a little over 1% for the year. As you would expect, you know, public safety, public works, general governmental expenditures, you know, those functions represent the majority of your general fund expenditures. Public safety does around $7.5 million this year, and it accounted for around 58% of the general fund's total expenditures. That percentage is really right in line with what we typically see of other local governments of your size. Your public services expenditures, they were just under $2 million for the year, and your general government expenditures were approximately $1.6 million, both of which were consistent with that of prior year. The chart on this slide shows the fund balance history of the city's general fund over the past six years. You know, it's always interesting to me to kind of reflect back and see, you know, where you were compared to where things currently stand. You know, as I mentioned earlier, it was a relatively flat year for the general fund. Fund balance had a slight decrease of around $42,000 for an ending balance of $2.4 million this year. So, again, as was the case with net position, fund balance, that's not necessarily what you all have on hand in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Again, fund balance, that's merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. Another thing to keep in mind when you're looking at your general fund, you know, the general fund incurs expenditures of just under $1.1 million per month. So, you know, with you all having a June 30-year end, you know, you all ended the year with a fund balance equal to a little over two months' worth of operating expenditures. And, you know, with you all having a June 30-year end, you know, a strong fund balance is necessary during that time to cover your expenditures during the months of July through November, when your revenues are typically down. A couple of the funds I do want to briefly mention are the city's three enterprise funds, which are your water sewer fund, your solid waste fund, and the new stormwater fund that was put into operation this year. Again, enterprise funds, they are used to account for operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. The intent of these funds is to be self-sufficient, meaning, you know, we want them to ideally generate sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. So, as you can see from this chart, the water sewer fund, it continues to do just that. It ended the year with operating income of approximately $283,000. That's an increase around $227,000 compared to prior year. So, you know, really good year in the water sewer fund compared to prior year. Solid waste fund did have an operating loss of around $168,000, but, you know, it still ended the year with a net position of right at $2 million for the year. And the new stormwater fund that I mentioned earlier, it had a good first year. You know, it had operating income of $168,000 this year. The third and final component of the city's financial statements are your footnotes. You know, the footnotes disclose the city's accounting methods. It provides an expanded explanation of the operational and financial results that you see in the statements. There really weren't any significant changes to those this year, so, you know, unless anybody has any specific questions, I won't go into those in detail. As I mentioned earlier, we do issue a compliance audit in conjunction with a financial audit, which is called the Yellow Book Report. This is a report of the city's internal controls and its compliance with laws and regulations. We did have one audit finding this year that came about during our audit of the Central State Hospital Local Redevelopment Authority. During our audit, we noted that the authority did not properly account for the receipt of grant funds that were received in fiscal year '19. And, you know, from our discussion with authority's third-party accountant, those grants funds were received in 2019. A new checking account was opened to hold these funds, and I think there was just a miscommunication there. She was unaware of this transaction, so therefore, those funds were not properly recorded in the authority's books as of the end of the year in fiscal year '19. So, we posted an adjustment. The adjustment was actually in the authority's favor. It increased your net position by $350,000. You know, however, when we have to post a prior-year adjustment, we are required to report that as an audit finding. But, you know, again, I see this as a one-time issue. It was just something that kind of slipped through the cracks. I don't anticipate this being a recurring finding, but again, as I stated earlier, when we do have a prior-year adjustment, we are required to record that as a finding. But, other than that, we noted no other internal control issues. So, you know, again, I think that's just another testament to the hard work done by your staff. You know, when you consider all the new accounting standards that are implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial statement reporting process has become, again, your staff did a great job this year. One final item to discuss with you all is certain information about the audit that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the city has received a clean opinion. We had no difficulties in dealing with management. We had no disagreements with management. We had no uncorrected misstatements. And again, we are independent of the city as required by the governmental auditing standards. Well, that concludes my presentation. You know, again, as I mentioned earlier, there's quite a bit of information in this report. What I've tried to do is just hit the highlights of what I think is of most importance to you all. But if there's anything that I did not touch base on that you all have any questions about, please don't hesitate to ask. But, again, I feel like this year's audit went extremely well. Again, just want to thank your staff, their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate the opportunity of being service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Is he done?
He's done.
Okay, David, you didn't want to see if they had any questions?
They don't want to have any questions for David?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank him. That was very concise and informative and short enough that you kept my attention. I appreciate that, David.
That's the goal. I appreciate that.
David, I do have one procedural question. As of the end of FY '19, the city is no longer funding the local redevelopment authority at Central State Hospital. So, based on that, will they need to be a part of our audit in the future?
That's a good question. If you wouldn't mind, let me look into it. I'd rather tell you the right answer later on than the wrong answer today. So, let me look into that a little bit, and we can go over it. And there's forms that we fill out that determine whether or not they should be a component unit of the city. So, given that new information, that's something we can definitely look into and reassess, and we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, we do still have an outstanding line of credit from them, but the city has not funded them in the last two budget years. And they actually had some bylaw changes as the authority that even strengthened the fact that they are state authority as opposed to local authority. So, just keep that on your radar for something for us to look at for the FY '21 audit.
Okay, absolutely.
David, I do have one question. Was there anything in the audit summary, any page or any particular item in the summary that you gave us that we needed to take note of?
Towards the back of your document, I'm looking at your financial statements right now. Bear with me. Beginning on page 118 of your financial statements, again, that's just the summary of the report, and it goes over what I mentioned earlier about the clean opinion. And it talks about the audit finding that I briefly touched you all on. But other than that, I mean, if you just wanted a summary of the financial statements, I would read the MDNA that I talked about earlier, and then the back of the document talks about the audit finding.
Okay. Okay.
The one thing that I would mention too, just as a piece of information for council, is we only collected the stormwater utility for half the year during the year that this audit shows. We didn't actually start collecting that until December. So, that's the reason the revenue on yet may look a little bit low, but this current budget year is the first year that we've collected it for the entire year. So, those numbers should be up in next year's audit. But we've got plenty of stormwater infrastructure to spend it on, so.
Oh, yeah. But it's, yeah. It's going to be included in that new act. Stormwater is one of the items that's included.
Stormwater and sewer infrastructure is included in the American Rescue Act. Potential uses, it sure is.
Oh, yeah. Okay, well, are there any more questions from council? Well, that concludes our awards and presentations. Thank you, David, for meeting with us tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, so we can move on to adopting the minutes. You all have received a copy of the March 23rd, 2021 Council Meeting Minutes. Are there any corrections to be made? Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay. We don't have any old business to discuss, so I'll move on to new business and ask the clerk to please read ordnance 0-2104-02 as the first reading of an ordinance to update the wastewater enforcement response plan.
An ordinance to adopt and update the industrial pretreatment compliance enforcement response plan, ERP.
Okay, that ordinance would be assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that right?
No, that would just be a first read of this ordinance.
Yeah, that would just be, yeah, I see that now. Yeah, that, it's all right, though. You threw me off there for a minute. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, that's just the first reading on that. The next one would be, I'll ask the clerk to read ordnance 0-2104-03 as the first reading of an ordinance to amend the land development code to grant a special use for the property located at 2586 North Columbia Street for use as a convenience store.
And this is... Conduct the first reading of an ordinance to amend the land development code to allow a special use of property located at 2586 North Columbia Street. This property is currently owned by Murphy Oil USA Incorporated and Zone CC. Applicant desires a special use for a convenience store with eight gas pumps. And that's the one that needs to be...
Yes, this is the one that needs to be assigned to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have two appointments to make tonight, and I would like to begin by nominating Don Parker for appointment to the Allied Arts Board. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
Of way of protest.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the motion is carried. The second appointment is also to consider an appointment to Allied Arts. I'd like to nominate Brenda Brawley to the Allied Arts Board, and I would like to say that Brenda has served on the board before. She resigned temporarily last year in June, but she has found some time and would like to come back, and we did have a position available for her. Do I hear a motion to confirm the nomination?
Motion to confirm.
Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee? Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the items on the agenda. Is there any further business that needs to be discussed tonight?
Ms. Shinholster?
Yes, ma'am.
You missed one person for appointments.
That was pulled...
Yeah, I actually sent an email out about that earlier today, and we're going to have to entertain the, going to look at, have to, y'all are going to have to discuss possibly entertaining an amendment to the land use code in order to be able to do that, so. But I did send that out with an email about, what, though, about four o'clock, probably 3:30 somewhere, 3:30, four o'clock, somewhere along in there, so.
Okay, Dr. Lee?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if I could explain, because this came up this afternoon, the current zoning ordinance says that all of the six members, who are not the chairman, but the six members who serve from the districts, the city council districts, they have to be from separate districts. Nobody, no two people can be in the same district, and this is what was set up in order to have representation across the city, and that you, as council members, would have input into who was appointed from your district. Apparently, in 2015, there was consideration given that if that kind of, if that appointment could not be made within a certain period of time, that the mayor could appoint someone at large. And I'm not sure what happened, other than that was never, for whatever reason, was never submitted to city council. It was actually, at the time that Ms. Walden was serving as the interim mayor, because when we pulled the draft of it, it had a signature line for her. But for whatever reason, that amendment did not go through what the city manager and I've talked about is sending that, revising it, updating it, and sending it out to you to give some consideration to approving that, so that we're not caught in the situation that we are now. We have somebody that wants to serve, but their appointment would place two individuals in the same, from the same city council district, which is currently prohibited by the ordinance, by the zoning ordinance. So we either need to change that, or, and I think that, you know, my recommendation to you from a legal standpoint would be to give that amendment some consideration, because first of all, it's very important that we, you know, ensure that we have a quorum at Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. You know, we do a lot of advertising, people obviously pay fees in order to have their zoning issue heard, and in cases where we simply don't have folks identified from every district, we still need the, we still need a full body, we need six members to ensure that we always have a quorum. So we're going to resubmit that to you, so that you can give that some thought. Obviously, that's something that would have to go back through planning and zoning, because it is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It is already drafted, like I said, I'm not sure why, how that came about, as it was not ever approved, but we'll get it back to you, and then, so you can give some consideration to, kind of a fail-safe way to make sure that we've got six members on the Planning and Zoning Command. We have seven total, but the chair is obviously at large, but in the planning and zoning setup, the chair is not a voting member unless there is a tie. But that's why that name, that's why that name was actually pulled.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Act like they want to stay all night, don't they, Dr. Lee?
Okay, we don't have to call the roll.
Good night.
Good night.